Okay, it is time to start this planning and zoning meeting on the June 2nd, 2025. The time is 5:02. Vance, you give us a roll call, please?
Charles Bradshaw.
Present.
Carl Pavloneis.
Present.
Lee Highsteed.
Present.
Charles, or excuse me, Mike Bradshaw.
Present.
Royal Barto has to be excused. There is a quorum present.
Okay, for the record, our Commissioner Charles Hammond resigned, and so as Acting Commissioner Charles Bradshaw, act, or as the, whatever it's called.
Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman, Chairman and Vice Chairman, I am taking charge of this meeting, and we will re-group, or whatever it's called, in a little while, but for the most part, we'll just continue with this then, and if there's anybody from the public, or any one of you that would care to make, say a prayer, then we'd appreciate that now.
I will.
Okay.
Lord, thank you for giving us this time together to discuss the needs and the wants of our community, and embrace the new people that are coming in and showing a development in the right way, helping our community grow, and give our board the guidance that it needs to make these decisions tonight, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. Just another note with Commissioner Hammond, I'd like to thank him for his time here. He is in the room tonight, but we want to thank him for his time and the things we've been able to accomplish under his leadership, I should, I guess.
Second.
Okay. You have the minutes of the prior meeting. Did you see any corrections or additions that needed to go into it?
I did not.
Mike was not here, so.
So I will abstain.
So I'll have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is the minutes from the April 7th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Pavloneis, second by Commissioner Steed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Okay, agenda number five is public comment. So is there anybody from the public that has anything to say at during this time?
Charles Hammond, thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, thank you, staff. I appreciate your sentiments earlier, and I wanted to just briefly give a few remarks at the beginning of the meeting. I appreciate your time. As you mentioned, I have resigned from the Planning Commission, and I'd like to just mention a few things. I went back and thought over the time that I had with the Commission, which I really enjoyed, and I found an email from Mayor Alred back in, it was just ironic, but it was June of 2018, which he offered his, you know, the opportunity towards me to be able to serve on the Planning Commission. So it was really neat to be able to find that email and see that appointment and realize that it was this month, let's see how many, five, six, seven years ago. We've really accomplished a lot since then, and it's really been a privilege to serve on this Commission. And so I just wanted to read a brief thank you. First of all, good evening. I'd like to take a few moments to express my gratitude as I stepped down from the role of the Colorado City Planning Commission. I'd like to thank Mayor Alred for appointing me to this Commission back in 2018, and I'd also like to thank Mayor Ream for affirming my position in the Planning Commission, as well as the city councils from then till now. It's been an honor to be entrusted with the responsibility of helping shape the future of our community. I want to thank the Town Council for their support, and my fellow Commissioners for their dedication, insight, and collaboration. It's been a privilege to work alongside such thoughtful and committed individuals. I also want to mention the work that staff has done in the time that I've been on the Commission. Really, that's where most of the hours are spent, is with staff. And when I think back to 2018, when we started, we didn't have land use ordinances, and it was a really interesting experience to try to be a Commissioner and make recommendations without any codes, or maps and whatnot, and a lot of the work that it took to put those in place was our staff. So appreciate Vance and others who have done a lot to make that possible. When I first accepted the appointment, my goal was to contribute meaningfully to the growth and planning of Colorado City. After several years of service, I feel that I have accomplished what I set out to do. The Planning Commission is in a great place today, with capable and dedicated people who are ready to continue this important work. I have full confidence in the Commission's ability to guide the community forward. While I'm stepping down from this role, I'm excited to share that I'm currently working on a new opportunity that will allow me to continue my service to the community in a different capacity. I look forward to sharing more about this in the near future, and staying engaged with the work that makes Colorado City a stronger and more vibrant place for all. Lastly, I want to thank the residents of Colorado City. The city's engagement, the residents' feedback, and their passion are what make our work as Commissioners meaningful. I encourage everyone to stay involved, to continue to ask questions, and to continue to shape the future of our community. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve. It's been an honor, and I wish you all the best as you continue this important work. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. Anything else from the public? Okay, we will move on to the Agenda Six, Planning Commission Reorganization. This one's not always a fun one, just because somebody has to take responsibility, right? So I don't know how we want to go about that, Vance. Do we, I don't remember how we did it last time.
I think last time, which was quite a few years ago, then we just did a nomination, somebody nominated, they accepted, and you voted on it. The important thing is that whoever takes that chair position needs to be committed to it. They need to be willing to take it.
Okay. I have been in the chair, co-chair position. I am willing to do the chair position if it's agreeable with the other Commissioners.
I would agree. I think you've done excellent there.
It sounds good. I will motion that Charles Bradshaw becomes the new chairperson.
Second.
We have a first and a second. First by Commissioner Brad, Michael Bradshaw now. I'm going to have to start delineating. Second by Commissioner Pavloneis for myself to be the chairperson. Chair, I guess it's chairperson in this day and age.
You can be a chairman.
Chairman? Do we need to do a roll call, Vance?
Only if there's a descending vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The second one is for Vice Chairman, and I'm just going to ask, is there anybody that would like to do this?
Well, I'm certainly willing to, if that's, if it's amenable.
I warned Royal, if he wasn't here, he couldn't defend himself.
Good point. And Royal's on the hot seat.
I'm more than willing to. Your and my time is, the terms are the same dates. I don't know if that matters.
It won't, because either way, we're going to have to reorganize at that point, if.
Yeah, whenever.
One of us leaves.
Right, or if whichever.
Right.
Correct, so.
Well, with that, then I would nominate Carl Pavloneis.
I'll second.
As the Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Michael Bradshaw, and a second by Commissioner Alred for co-chairman of Mr. Pavloneis.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair of Carl Pavloneis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. So we are reorganized.
Good.
That's easy. Not that I want to be, you know, in the spotlight all the time, but it's not a big deal.
Yes, Commissioner Steed, not Alred.
Steed. I meant Steed.
Roll call it.
He said Alred, and I was just thinking, I've been thinking about him ever since. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Is that correct?
No, public.
We ought to get that.
Not public comment, hearings, public hearings. And so we will close this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. We will close this meeting at 5:12, and open the public comment. Actually, it's 5:13. Is there anybody from the public that is going to address anything that, which there is none, so we will reclose it at the same time, 5:13. Okay, zoning map eight, or Agenda Eight, Consider Zoning Map Amendment Partial 404-53-465 from RE1A to R112. And is there any discussion from the Commissioner? Well, actually, let's have Vance introduce it first.
This is an application by Levi Jessup. It's a pretty straightforward corner, three-lot split, going to R12, RE1A. It's located on the corner of Pioneer Street and Garden.
I've had a chance to look at it. It looks like one of those straightforward lot splits, very, very easy to do, and I didn't see any issues with it either.
I couldn't tell from the paperwork if they're trying to recover that corner house.
That corner house, this house right here is one of the lots.
Oh, I know that, but I don't know, I mean, the house is pretty rough.
Oh, yeah.
I've been in there. It's pretty, I live up the block.
Yeah, that's, that's a decision they'll have to.
Yeah.
With the Building Department, if that's salvageable or not, but.
Correct.
If they are going to, then they'll need to make sure their lot lines give that clearance.
Accommodate for the setbacks. So I have a couple of questions, if.
Sure.
Chair. So on these, so does this require, I assume there's a power water sewer available in Pioneer Street?
Yes. The developer, Levi, will be required to do whatever he has to do to get sewer water to each lot created, reroute them if he has to, so they're not crossing lot lines, and also do a curb and sidewalk around it.
So on Garden Avenue and Pioneer Street?
Yes.
Yes.
No asphalt, just, just the curb and gutter sidewalk?
That's the balance the council has settled on for the way we inherited it and how to balance it.
Yep. So that each lot is sellable and usable, like the person can take that thing and go build something on it.
And as we get pieces, enough pieces, we'll come in and tie that foil into it.
Okay.
And that's how it is with every, every, every.
There was about six of them, the very first ones that didn't have that requirement, and then.
Yeah, I just was clarifying that. It certainly makes, certainly makes sense. Each of these lots are within the, above the 12,000 square foot.
That, those townhomes down there on Mojave?
Are they Mojave?
They're still, they've still yet got to do the west side, and I can't remember what street that is.
Richard.
Richard Street, but they wanted to wait till they did their next phase and do the whole thing at once.
Because they're going to have to dig that up.
Right, and so we.
I see.
We recommended the city that that's what they do, and they agreed with that, but that's only reason that side's not done.
Right, and that was a condition that they will have to be done.
Correct.
On the subsequent phases.
On their next phase, yes. Yep.
Well, certainly makes sense. This is the right way, this is the exact lot you should be doing this on, so.
We've actually done quite a few just like this, and they've worked out really well, in my opinion.
I did one, one block over for Paul Barto, not that long ago.
Anything else from the Commissioners?
I want to make a comment, and I wish Thomas was here, since he hears enough of our disagreement with stuff, that I did appreciate him showing out the new parcel A, parcel B, parcel C, because normally that's what I do on the Mojave County GIS, and how accurate is it, so I would like to encourage him to do that further in the future. Helps a lot.
When they do the actual engineering, the civil engineering on it, all those things are spelled out.
Yeah, but we never see that.
Gets recorded.
In the plating.
Right.
Yeah, we don't.
It does help, though, for us to be able to differentiate which is which. So yes, I agree with Commissioner Pavloneis. Anything else? And I will make a motion to recommend to the Town of Colorado City to consider the zoning map amendment to parcel 404-53-465 from RE1A residential estate to R112 single-family residential.
Second.
So we have a first by Commissioner Charles Bradshaw, second by Commissioner Lee Highsteed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimous. Okay, Agenda Number Nine, Discussions on Alley's and Street Standards. And in your email, you said you didn't, you haven't had a chance to look at anything, which does not surprise me. So I have, guys are upside, upside down in all your work.
At the April meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion on the idea of maybe converting some of the utility alleys into streets, unless we want some really narrow streets.
So what are the, what are the widths of the, of the alleys currently on those?
Most of them are around 20 to 25 feet. There's one of them that's like 10 feet, which is too narrow. The widest one is between Juniper and Oak, and it could conceivably, I think, be made into that. But there's very few of them.
There's not very many of the, of the actual alleys?
No.
So are they, are they easements, or are they actually public right-ofways? Because I know that a lot of people have fences, fenced them out, and so there's the.
The one, if you look on the county map, they are not part of the parcels.
Okay.
Yes.
The one, the one, two of them between Arizona and Uzona were actually given a separate parcel number, which the UEP transferred over to the city.
Okay.
Most, the other one that I'm thinking of doesn't have any parcel number. It's just treated like a road right-ofway, but it's just a right-ofway that's owned by the city by default.
This came up in April because we had two flag lot requests.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Was it three at the same?
Yeah. With alleys behind them.
Uh huh.
Well, one of them.
So this alley is.
Potential alley.
Right.
If you look at it, it's really not. It's just a driveway that went up the hill.
Oh.
But that one may yet turn into that, because we got somebody else that wants to do some in the old Donald Pipkin place, for those who know what that is.
But that would be, mean that they would give up some of their property and actually probably make a proper road.
Yeah, we'd have.
Potentially. Which is what?
That, that one could potentially, from the base of the hill out to Academy, could potentially be treated as a street, but then the hill goes way too steep.
What's your, what's your narrowest street section?
That's part of the discussion we need to have. In our development standards, it's like 66 feet, which is unreasonable.
Agreed.
But there's also a caveat in there that says that the city council can approve a narrower street as long as it conforms with APW, or some.
Yeah.
And was that, was that 45?
Which most of, most of our developments, in fact, every one of them is proposing new neighborhood streets, have requested and been granted those narrower.
Does it go down to 45, or 50?
The narrowest one we did, and they haven't done their plat yet, so I'm not sure what's happening with it, was 35 feet.
35-foot right-ofway?
On one side. It's a very small.
I see.
Unit or something.
I see. But it's not on a major, it's inside of a.
Most of them have been 45 feet. I think Reservoir Acres was 45 feet.
Hmm.
Side, you know, side.
So is that something you're considering doing, is changing the street standards?
Yes, we need to, in our development standards, go in and define by right some neighborhood streets, that say if it's serving X many, or if it's not going clear through, it can come down to this narrow.
Right.
It's serving this many, it's got to be this wide.
Hmm, yeah, I agree. 66, I 100% agree is.
But I'm really open to suggestions on how to, where those land, because I am not an expert on it.
I'm not an expert, but I have a lot of experience in dealing with the roads and the ADTs that come, and so I would certainly be willing to float some concepts.
Right.
Because I do, there are, I think a 45-feet foot for a low traffic is perfectly adequate.
Right.
I just got a letter from the fire chief, it's actually a letter from Utah Fire Chiefs, and they're sending out these warnings to all the cities. It's the Utah side, I don't know how well they did the Arizona side, but they're saying that they have maximized, they're saying that the maximum amount of asphalt that we can require is 32 feet. The legislature wants the first step back to 25. So we're pushing really hard for it. What they're telling all the jurisdictions is that if we, if people keep saying in the name of the fire department that we have to wire it, then the legislature can definitely want to push it as far as we can. So if we want to make sure that we don't require the lower streets to be wider, then we don't, then we probably won't have to have the legislature step in and kick us back a little bit.
That's a narrow street.
25, 25 is pretty narrow. I probably would not recommend that narrow, but 28, I think, is perfectly reasonable.
We can require up to like 32.
30 is plenty wide.
But you're saying street surface.
I'm talking, I'm talking asphalt, asphalt, lip a curve to lip a curve.
We were 45.
45 to right-ofway.
Full right-ofway.
Yeah, full right-ofway, absolutely. 45 gets you a, I think about a 27-foot asphalt, is what I remember, something like that.
Yeah, but that's Hilldale's problem, not ours.
The Arizona's got stuff just as down.
Yeah. I, I am a, I'm a huge fan of narrow roads. I think that they slow down traffic. I think they create an element of safety that has not been, in, Salt Lake has taken all their wide roads and basically made them into, into one-lane roads with, with landscape tracks between them because of safety. When you're, when it's a landscape.
And that's one of the things I was going to talk about in some of these things, is maybe a one-way road on some of these narrow strips, if that's a.
Well, I think the challenge, and it's, it's not a bad idea, the challenge with the one-way is, is it wide enough? And if, and if it's wide enough for a fire truck and fire apparatus, for all the things, it's probably wide enough for two-way, almost.
Yeah.
What you're going to end up eliminating is your sidewalks.
Which.
With its own challenges.
Which does come with its own challenges.
Especially in the alleys.
But also, there's none of them that would serve more than 12 lots total.
The alleys, correct.
See, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's worth it, because.
You get four or six.
You're going to have, most of those people are probably not going to want to do anything with them anyway. And then the other ones that did, we already have the flag lot thing in place to accommodate that, if, if that's what they want to do, which is way simpler than turning an alleyway into a road.
Right.
And then they could take back that property, too.
What kind of, what, yeah, good point. And what kind of utilities land in those? Is it mostly power?
What they were put in there for was utilities.
Hmm.
So you got sewer, potentially, water, potentially, power, and most of those lots, the utilities, at least some of them, come from that alley and go clear length of the lot up to the houses.
Right.
And so they would end up having to reroute those, make.
I see.
Any utility slot.
Hmm.
You know, and I just, every one of them we've looked at, and there's been a couple of people that have approached us over the years, and when you start looking at that and rerouting their power and sewer from going diagonal across their lot up to their house, you got to run it square up here and over, and you can't cross a lot with it.
Yeah, especially, I mean, it seems like most of that, most of the utilities in those are power, overhead power at that.
Well, actually, most of those up there are going to be underground.
Are they?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a challenge.
I wasn't there when those decisions were made.
Well, if it's overhead, if it's overhead, you can actually, you might be able to get to those and then give the property back to the adjacent owners if they so desire it, obviously. But, you know, with it being underground, that becomes a little bit more problematic.
The other option they would be is have to give up property.
Build a new building.
Create a wide enough road that.
To do that, you'd have to get all your neighbors on board.
Correct, on both sides. Well, actually, on one side at least, because you can take more of one side. But then, then what good did it do? Now you just shrunk your property down, and now you, you might not be able to, you might not be able to split the lot anyway.
And you've lost your flaglot ability.
Well, if you're coming from both sides, you'd have two lots. Well, they'd just be fairly small.
That was kind of what brought it up, was, was if that would be a valid alternative to creating flaglots, at least in those areas.
Right.
But it's not very many. I mean, you don't have very many of those.
No.
So we're still stuck with however many, there's, there're going to be flaglots anyway, if that's what they want to do. It's not going to change the factor to get away from flaglots.
Well, and flaglot or not, if they choose to use that as a driveway, then that's, they still have to run their utilities up the other side, but it can still remain a driveway.
So you don't have to, there's no improvement requirement on, on the alleyway, just the frontage?
Right.
But if they, if they do a flaglot, though, they have to do the front of their property.
Of all the property being.
Right.
Correct. So if it's, well, we, we wouldn't do one on a corner lot anyway, so.
Flaglot, right.
No. Obviously.
So yes, they would have to do, they would have to do the curb and gutter and all that stuff. All the improvements would have to be made. And then there, the flaglot is obviously, has to have a wide enough driveway that they can get back there.
Yeah.
Access it.
25 feet.
Yeah.
Minimum 25 feet.
I think it's, I think it's 20.
150, 12, 9.
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
350 from the nearest hydrant.
350? So the driveway has to be 350 from the nearest hydrant?
I believe the home.
I'm not sure on that one, if it's the driveway or the building, the house.
Because, yeah, you might have to install a hydrant.
The one up on Johnson, he had to install a hydrant.
Did he?
As part of.
To get, to get his fire coverage? Well, code is 500 feet to every part of the building from your hydrant, so that's the maximum length that you're allowed. So if you, so if, if you have a hydrant 350 feet, that might barely get back to the front of your house. So you might have to put hydrant in. So, yeah, well, I personally am ambivalent about flaglots. I don't, I don't love them, but also don't hate them.
Well, it was, we adopted that as a way to allow, because we was getting some really creative ideas from some really creative people, how they could slice and dice those lots. And the flaglot was, was a compromise, allowed them to split it without having to get.
Do you, you don't allow a multiple driveway, right?
No.
So it's a single, so basically. So it's a single, so basically, if they split it into three, they would have to have two separate 25-foot driveways.
Our code actually does not allow that.
Does not allow that.
So it doesn't allow the double drive?
Correct.
Yeah. So basically...
So the one acre lot, if they're doing a flag lot, they can basically get one more lot.
Get one more lot out of them.
Right.
That's it.
Where on a corner like this one, they can get, they can get three.
Technically, get four if they want to go through the subdivision process.
Yeah.
But that's the criteria. So you have to go through the subdivision process to get more than three.
Right.
Makes sense.
Actually, based on state statute.
Correct. We have, we, have we ever done one of those?
Yeah, the one out on Pioneer, the one that straight up builders...
Oh, that's right. That, yeah. So they had that house there, and then they split it three more times. That's right, I forgot about that one. They're getting ready to move on those, too.
Well, sounds good. I do think that there, that the city needs to have a...
Well...
Discussion on, on road widths. I think that the current standard widths are, they're, they're the state of Arizona standard widths, or Mojave County standard widths were widths, which I think are ridiculous personally. State, the section lines have to be 86 feet. Quarter sections have to be 70 feet, and then internal streets, the smallest street in Mojave County is 66, which again, I think is just...
Right.
Way too, way too...
But when you get into a neighborhood, it's...
Ridiculous. Agreed.
I'm with you, just when I drive, I mean, I just get bored sometimes and drive through neighborhoods in Phoenix or somewhere. And they do, you just slow right down.
You do. You, you just cannot go fast.
You're not going to go faster.
They're, they're, they're curvy. People park on the side.
Sometimes they will. They'll put curbs in them for the same thing to...
Yeah.
Calming, traffic calming.
Yeah. I mean, I live on a street where people regularly go 60. It's, it's bonkers.
But no motorcycles.
No, there's motorcycles, but not as many.
Well, and you can't put speed bumps in either.
Oh, no. I'm okay with that.
And BB guns and paintball guns are illegal.
That is a problem.
They're not illegal, it's just illegal to shoot them.
Just shoot them at moving cars, moving targets.
Yeah, my section of homestead is 66 feet wide. It'd be nice to...
People get up and go.
And it's between two sections of asphalt, so it's kind of a cut-through street.
Okay.
Okay, well, we're just discussing this, so if there's no more discussion, then we will go to informational summaries.
The next regular meeting scheduled for July 7th, Monday. And I haven't got, I think we have the dates for the APA conference, but I didn't look them up and put them on there, so...
Paul, again?
Yeah. But I think they're, remember, I think they're in September. I'll get those on this one.
Where is that? Is that in Tucson again, or, or do you know?
Hope not. I think it's in the Phoenix Valley.
Okay.
I don't mind Tucson, it's just a lot more drive.
I mind Tucson, but...
I have a question for Andy Barlow, as long as he's here. Or just a clarification. This comes up in my mind all the time, because it's in my backyard. Before power is in place at the new LDS church, we are having dark sky standards implemented there. We're not going to, I'm not going to see a white spire out in my backyard.
I am not sure what we've done on that. I didn't, I didn't really look too much into the streetlights, the stuff that they have, but I think that there was a discussion with that.
Yeah, I'm...
Talking about the streetlights that they're using now in parking.
The parking?
I think that they just problems, but they're using the same things that we approved on the streets.
Yeah, I'm talking about lighting up this spire, so that's all I see.
The spire, the, the...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't think they light those up too much anymore. Like a, like the temples.
Let's hope not.
I don't think they do.
Both the lighting out there is just...
Downlight.
The dimmer on the building, and they, they have the covers.
Yeah.
Because the parking lot of MCC is bad enough, because those, and I don't know how they afford to have those on...
24/7.
All night long, but...
LED, right?
They're bright. But yeah, it'd be nice to start implementing dark sky standards, because it's, once you let go of that, you're never getting it back.
This is also not on the agenda, but do you know, do you know what the, have you talked to Mayor Ream at all about that, whatever that thing is up there, across from Bee's?
The Watchman, Watchman's Point, whatever it's called.
Yeah, about, because we're supposed to meet and go discuss more of that.
Yes, we, we have. We are going to be bringing the ordinance forward to the council. And then once that's in place, then we will...
Set some terms.
...down on the development agreement. The development agreement is really the meat of it.
And is the development agreement set in stone? Or is it something that can be changed along the way by...
Set in sandstone. Meaning, yes, both parties are held to it, but yes, it can be amended by mutual agreement.
Okay. I just want to, yeah. Because it's going to take them a while to build that thing out.
Oh, yeah.
We don't want to be stuck to what we're doing now, if something works better in the future. Okay.
And with this other gentleman involved, we're getting a lot more common sense.
Who else is involved?
A gentleman named Todd Wimpy, with an H, Wimpy.
Wimpy, yeah. And he's from...
He's, he's been a lot more level-headed. I mean, he's, he's pretty grounded. The Kent guy is a very talented engineer, but he gets in rabbit holes really easy.
So is that the same gentleman that was at the initial meeting? He's from up north, lived, grew up in a small town?
Yeah, the...
Wimpy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, you're thinking of at the first meeting.
The first guy, the, yeah, I don't, the engineer.
Kent Wilkinson. Yeah, he's, he's a, gets pie in this guy real.
Yeah.
Which I think Kent was at that second meeting, but the guy that was talking to us the most of the time.
Our combined work session was, the, the shorter guy there was Todd Wimpy.
The guy bringing the money.
He's taking the lead on it. He's the contact.
Yeah, well, he's done a lot of developments, so, too. Well, that'll be anxious to get that decisions made, so that we're not wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? We will call this meeting adjourned at 5:40. Thank you all.
I still want to hear the gavel when you're done.
I don't have a pounder board.